Hey, it's been about a minute or so. Go over to the chat box and share some of your ideas with us for this five-minute reset. Yes, get up, walk around, deep breaths. Good, stretching, calm music. I love that one, too. Pray or meditate. Great. Oh, that's wonderful, Pat. Yes, we all need that time, even if it's just a quick few minutes to ourselves sometimes. So this is wonderful. Keep them coming in the chat box. So this activity mostly aligns with Castle Competencies of Self-Awareness and Self-Management. And again, as a reminder, the South Carolina Department of Education has embraced this Castle model, and you can find tons of different resources and research on the Castle website. And as another reminder, we are your facilitators for this book study. And again, please feel free to reach out to us at any time with questions that you may have regarding implementation of MTSS in your school or district. So in preparation for our discussion today, please have available, as usual, your MTSS book, a writing utensil, notebook paper, if you have it. And in preparation for today, you should have read one of the case study chapters that you signed up to read. And you'll be sharing some significant key points and highlights and any connections you've made with your small group. And we also suggest that you have the digital agenda open so that way you can access any needed links and resources for today's book talk session.
Okay, since this is our last book study meeting, we're definitely interested in getting some feedback. So take a second to look at the book study virtual meeting norms and think about which norm has been beneficial for you as a learner and a participant during our time together, and drop that in the chat. Also like you to think about what other types of norms would be beneficial for you as you are thinking about future book studies. What's helpful for you in a situation, a virtual situation like this as a participant and as a learner? If there's anything else you want to unmute yourself and share so we can gather those ideas, or dropping it into the chat would be great. Looks like we've got a couple people typing. Karen, I also benefit by just being sure that I am actively listening, even though other things may be going on around me. Thanks, Pat. Right. Okay, so what I'd like us to do now is we're going to be utilizing another type of tool to engage you in a whole group discussion in order to enhance our time together. And we've created these opportunities to encourage conversations and also to introduce you to a variety of online tools that can be used with teachers and students to increase engagement. And so for our last whole group discussion, we'll use a website called whiteboard.fi. This is a free tool for teachers to use without on features for paid accounts, if you are wanting to use that. And you're going to, you can access your own digital whiteboard by using the website link and code in your digital agenda. I have found that the website is easier than going on a desktop is easier to go through than a phone. And so once you go to whiteboard.fi, you will click on "Join a Class", and you can enter the code that's listed here. And then, once you're in there, I'd like you to add a comment, either by writing on your virtual whiteboard or typing in an answer to this first question of "How has this book study impacted your district's or school's MTSS plan?" So I'm going to now share that site so that we can be sure to see everyone else's ideas. And ladies, if you'll let me know that you can see this right now?
Yes, Audrey, we can see it.
Okay, so you can see Allison's response? I'm so excited to see that you have a list of next steps, Allison, and definitely bring some clarity to your teachers and to your schools for, sorry about that, for developing your MTSS structures. So let's see here. Let me go back, make sure I've got everybody's whiteboard there. Close out of this one. Refresh, see if we have some more. Yeah, there we go. Oh. So it looks like we have a few that are adding on. Awesome. I love that.
Yes, great comment.
Anyone else like to just unmute to share your thinking? Love that idea of support systems, how important those are so that we can all be successful. Wonderful. Refresh one more time, then we'll move on. I like using this tool because you can also see how it could be utilized in with teachers, with students, and how they can get a visual of all their students in the class and who's everyone's ideas, and also highlight and share different ideas. Okay. Now I'm going to minimize that. Wonderful. Would anyone like to unmute, though, and share just verbally with us about these two questions, specific to this book study, how it's impacted your district, or also what questions do you still have in regards to an integrated MTSS system? No questions? I knew it. That's why when I emailed you today, I said gurus, because after this book study, you're all fantastic and ready to lead the charge in your districts or schools. I see Monica smiling.
So we can publicize their name as the "go-to folks."
Yes. Wonderful. Okay, well, just keep in mind, you know our names and you have our emails. So if additional questions do come up during, you know, as you start to proceed forward, please feel free to reach out to us, because we are here to support you.
Absolutely. And now it's time for the bulk of where we'll spend our time this session. We'll be going to breakout rooms for 30 minutes, and we'll be using the Jigsaw Protocol. Most of you are probably familiar with it, but I'll just read through the slide to refresh our memory. So we'll be in small group so that we can digest the larger text in smaller chunks and share with each others. Everyone has their MTSS book, and you should have signed up for a specific study. We, when you get into the small group, oops, go back.
I'm sorry.
When you get into the small group, you'll divvy up the chapter that you chose, take some time to read it. And then you'll look for, as you're reading it, looking for key points, new information, or answers to questions that you may have had earlier. Each member shares their important points or summaries of the text. And we're going to, we have some specific questions that you'll discuss. And at the end, we'll have, we'll bring you back together, and we'll have a discussion about your summaries. All right? So you should have signed up for which case study. Chapter eight was Oregon, chapter nine Florida, and chapter 10 was Michigan. And so when we come back into the room, we'll be discussing what your summaries and thinking around that. And here are some, the next slide has some discussion points to consider as you prepare to come back to the group. I think that we could probably drop those discussion questions into the chat. Yep, like presto, one of my colleagues did that. So some things to consider, provide an overview of your selected case study. So take the summaries that you've all come together to provide an overview. Think about the comparisons of the case study and where you are at your school in the MTSS implementation process. And then what are some unique contextual factors that impact your school's or district's implementation? That, I would say, is a strong consideration when you're thinking about scaling your knowledge in your school, because no place, no two school buildings are the same. And how do the Lessons Learned section impact your plans for MTSS at your school or district? And what might you adopt from these case studies for your implementation of MTSS? For those of you who had some lingering questions, this might be a place where you spend some time in discussion and thinking around it. And last but not least, what's next, or what is your first next step? So once again, the questions have been dropped in the chat. And when you get into breakout rooms, you'll divvy up the chapter and read individually, highlight important points, summarize your section, and then be prepared to come back to the group to debrief. All right.
Okay, ladies. What time should we leave the room?
Oh, good question. It is exactly 3:45. So let's say 4:16. It's just changed as I was talking. So at 4:16, we will return. So make sure you have your facilitator and timekeeper as always. Thank you.
It's not me being late today.
Woo!
Okay. And for a moment, our message. There's Ricky.
I'm back.
I was excited. I wasn't the one that was the late arrival.
Um, so I know we've got the three highlights, two connections and question protocol that we're familiar with. Yeah, so I guess we'll just go that route rather than the, the discussion of the, of the questions that we had. All right, so who wants to step up? I need three people to give me highlights from their group, please.
I can go ahead, Ms. Brown, if you'd like.
Thank you, sir. Go ahead.
We had a very lively discussion. Ms. Brown is an excellent facilitator. We all were on the ball. That would be Dr. Dinkins, Mr. Bellamy and Ms. Valerie. Ms. Valerie had Oregon, I believe. Mr. Bellamy and myself and Ms. Brown have Florida and Mr. Dr. Dinkins had Michigan. We had a robust discussion in regards to similarities. One of the things that I didn't have a problem with, and Ms. Brown alluded that it wouldn't be a problem, is that the, the state of Florida in that case study, I liked how they took the statewide approach and then gave direct intervention techniques and strategies to the, um, to the district. So it was more of, as Ms. Brown put it, a top-down approach instead of the other cases being more of a ground-up approach. And I alluded to OSIS's rollout of the South Carolina High School credentialing process, where the districts all came together to have a state conference in regards to that. And so everyone was hearing the, the same verbiage, the common language, as Mr. Bellamy put it. That was very crucial in, in that jump-off point. And I would like to see And I would like to see something like that. And Ms. Brown alluded to the repository of professional learning opportunities that I actually kind of looked at a little bit. And I'd be happy, as I was stating, that I have collected kind of a repository. And I'd be happy to share a website that does a very, very strong job of giving interventions by grade level, by need. And I'm going to put that in the chat here. And feel free to use it, do whatever you want with it. It's pretty, it's pretty strong, in my opinion. It hits a lot of things and it coaches you through. So I, I am going to go ahead and put that in the box for everyone to look at. I'm trying to integrate that into a school website with the hyperlinks, but I'm not having a tremendous amount of luck. But I've, it's my, it's my go-to. But we, the highlights, I think, from Michigan was that they gave the time, the, the time to develop those strategies and they phased it in, which is always nice. I think we also talked about recruitment and retention is also an issue. In all those states, I believe it was brought to the attention that, you know, you put in these processes and sometimes what makes them fail is that the people that were doing them left, not necessarily the process itself. And so the, the retention aspect of keeping strong teachers in those positions or making the process so foolproof anybody can jump into it. And then also, again, having a repository from the state level that we all, once we've, I think Ms. Brown stated it perfectly when she said that some of our student or our teachers, they get, they're fatigued to the point when they get to the intervention because they've done so much work. It'd be nice to, once you define the problem, to have a nice, safe, easy place to go to, to figure out a solution and just put into place those practices. So for us, hopefully that, that hits all those three highlights.
Awesome. Good job. All right. Who's going to step up to the plate next?
I'll step up.
Um, thank you.
I was in a group with Ms. McLam. We were only a group of two because one of ours had to be out today. But, um, I think he covered all the, the, the big key points. And I've been trying to think. I like to come up with analogies and try to help me understand things. And I kind of compared it to, like a jigsaw puzzle. We all love to put puzzles together. And sometimes those puzzle pieces get mixed up and we'll have pieces of puzzle that don't belong to the actual puzzle. And I think that's what a lot of people did. They'll start with this thing and that thing and the other thing. And then sometimes we don't even have the picture. When I'm doing the puzzle, I like to have my picture there. So, um, they, Florida started with the pieces of the puzzle, but they really didn't know what the finished picture should look like. So, um, and, and I, I can relate to that. We've had, all had pieces of puzzles thrown at us. But then if we give each of our schools that same puzzle to put together with the same picture, then we should have a consistent plan. So I think a, a lot of key points were here, just the balance between the consultation model, making sure we're, you know, we don't have to strict point, point, stick to the points of every model here. You know, we have to pick out and pull out what will work for us.
Very well said. Thank you. Thank you. All right. If there's not anyone else that wants to share highlights, we can move on to connections and questions.
I'm going to, I'm going to share from our group. I thought, uh, we, we talked a lot about the need for a database problem, problem-solving process so that we can ensure that whatever is the challenge for the child, that we're thinking as a team of how can we support that? And there was an example around, um, when they're traditionally having PLC meetings and to look at data. Teachers may say, well, I don't have data because the child isn't attending my online class or isn't coming to school. But that is data right there. So a great time to now, let's think together and put into place an intervention that's going to help with attendance so we can later get the academic needs. Because if that's not in place, then we, we can't attend to the academics. And so just ensuring that the teams are coming together to look at data and really use that to help drive, okay, this is what our intervention needs to be.
Good points. Thank you. What about questions? We've digested a lot in this book study. There was a lot that came to the surface from looking at individual states. What questions are lingering for anybody out there, whether you shared it with your group or, or not? What are some questions?
I don't have a question, but I do have a comment and I, I shared it, you know, group. One, one of the things that Michigan stated, and I believe it's, it'd be beneficial for all of us, is to start small and, and not overwhelm yourself or overwhelm your system by trying to bite off a whole lot real fast at one time.
Yep. Very good advice in education where we have so many resources and so many options. Just narrowing the focus, taking it, the elephant one bite at a time.
And that, that leads me to a question that I want to just keep in mind as I, you know, support schools and districts of just always thinking, whatever new decisions are being made about initiatives for the school or district, materials, resources, just always think, how does this fit into our MTSS system? And if it does, then awesome. If not, is this what we need to do right now? Because, again, it's just more and more and more.
Yep. Yep. That's, a lot of places are feeling that right now. So that's, that's a good point. A question I would have, if I were someone going back into the district that's not necessarily in a decision-making position, is where do I start or how do I spread the gospel of MTSS, I guess, to my school, you know? How, how would I share that?
That was my question too. How do I have an impact being one person at one school? How do I have an impact or what can I do to have an impact on a district-wide program?
So I would go back to what Mr. Dinkins mentioned, which is start small. So look at the information that you have and the area that you feel most comfortable sharing. And I would share it with my building leadership, be it the principal or the leadership team. And I would also make them aware of the, the modules. Pat, what, what is your position, if you don't mind me asking?
I'm an assistant principal.
Oh, okay. Yeah, yeah. So I would, I would start there. You were in a, a great place to implement that innovation by just sharing it with the rest of the leadership team in your school. And let your school become that beacon where the district comes in and says, okay, we've got an example here.
And I think it came out in another one of our book studies about just the power of inviting people from the district. If you've got something good going, started in your school, invite them to participate. And it will start to open some eyes and some conversations, for sure.
Yeah, Monica and I had a conversation. We actually have a position, district position open now for a MTSS coordinator. So we had a conversation about that as well.
Okay. Are we ready to move on, ladies? Great discussion. Thank you all for your energy and participation.
So as we in this book study, we would like to share with you some other MTSS resources that are offered through the Office of Early Learning and Literacy. The link to the six components of the MTSS Module Series 2 can be found on your digital agenda. They are all on-demand modules that can be used with a team and/or with individuals. So once you click on the link, you're going to scroll down to where it says MTSS Module Series 2. Notice there up in the dates, it's on-demand, so you can watch them at your leisure. And then the format, again, is on-demand, is a self-study, is pre-recorded modules, and there are six of them. And then you just click on the module that you would like to view.
Okay. So in our final exit ticket, we are hoping to gain some feedback regarding this book study process. Specifically, what did you enjoy? What would help make this book study more beneficial for your role in the future? And so we appreciate your, your feedback and hope to see you again in, in future book studies that we, we offer. We really want to thank you so much for spending time with us over the last eight sessions, really diving into strong structures and practices for implementing MTSS. I know that it's been a wonderful experience for me and I think that's the same for all of my colleagues. And we hope that you've enjoyed it as well. We're now asking you to take what you've gained from this experience and be the change in your schools and in your districts. And let this final session truly be the beginning of something that's even better for the students in South Carolina. So thank you again for being here. Right, Pat? What are we going to do? We have, no, your Thursday afternoon has opened up.
The weather's getting better, so maybe you can get a chance to get some sunshine.
Hi, hi, ladies.
Okay. Mr. Dinkins, I am still working on getting those. I have sent my request to the State Department. I'm just waiting for it. So as soon as it comes through, I'll let you know. But no worries. We'll, we'll make it.
Thank you. Now I'm going outside to cut some grass.
Enjoy that.
Yeah. I'm glad it's you and not me. Take care.
Thank you. And Ramona, I'll see you in a month.
I know. It's still too long. Allison, I miss you.
I know. I just got a text about how, how missed I was, but they said, don't rush back. I said, don't worry, no matter how missed I am, I'm not rushing back.
I don't blame you. Your little bundle of joy at home is much more fun, I'm sure.
It is. All right. Thank you.
All right. Be well.
Ramona, do you work with Allison now?
I do. I do.
They have a nice little team. It was her and I think Mary.
That's me. Thank you, ladies, so much. I have so many takeaways. It was awesome.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
And we'll see you, Ramona. Be safe, y'all.
All right. Be safe. Bye.
Okay. Nice work, ladies.
I want to do a happy dance, but Ricky can't join in because she might go into labor.
I need to do it. Yay, we did it. That was a long book study.
It was. But you know, I look forward to it. Each time, I really did.
I did too. To think of us like way back last summer. Brainstorming, thinking about it, prepping for it, and now we're, we're finished. So that's exciting. Um, okay, Ramona, I love your idea of in the repository intervention resources. That's huge.
That was actually Mr. Coller's idea. And, and, and I said I would definitely share that. Yeah.
What a great idea.
I mean, he, and I was checking out that website. I was kind of getting distracted because he put it in the chat. So I was looking at it. It kind of reminded me of like Florida's, like Center for Reading Research, how they have it organized. You know, and even in our, if we did this repository, we could link out to some of those that have repositories already, you know?
Yes.
Give, it gives a place to start, you know? I think that's.
And I think there's, what, Easy CBM, I think it's called, is another, more around assessing.
Okay.
Like assessments for kids. I don't really think specific. I'm, I've lost the, the link that he posted. I got to pull it up before.
It was like a elementary school in Arlington. It was, you know, it was like their own kind of homegrown page.
Yeah.
Hey, you know, and they actually linked out to Florida Center for Reading Research at some, and some of them, but.
Yeah, what a good idea. Yeah, and Intervention Central is another one that I would go to for behavior issues in, in class. They have a lot of really good behavioral interventions. Some of them are, um, a deeper dive than you might want to take when you're facing an immediate problem. But even if we were to, as part of the repository, create like video shorts showing how the intervention was implemented or explaining the intervention.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do you mean like in that instructional hub thing that's coming out?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. I love that idea. I think that's super, will be helpful in having one location just to look.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Okay. Well.
I know.
We can do it again.
I can't hear you, Bettina. I saw you talking, but I couldn't hear you.
You're on mute.
All right. I was saying you might want to stop recording.
Thank you.
We always forget that.
I know.